Kevin, would you lay this on the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the meeting. We will begin with the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for November 1st, 2021.
Second? All in favor? Aye. No opposed? Next is the minutes from last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the actual 2021 meeting.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Which brings us to student battery report. Regina?
So, yeah, we just said it's November, which is crazy. I wore my tis the season to be jolly sweatshirt today. I'm fine with my Christmas music, I'm ready. Cross-country sectionals are this Saturday. All of our other fall sports are done with sectionals. The boys and girls soccer teams both lost in very competitive final games. Our volleyball team lost in three quarters, then our football team lost in quarters. But they all had really amazing seasons. The NJHS annual Thanksgiving food drive has begun. The clubs have boxes that will be put around shortly. Our first high school athletics meet is this Thursday in Letchworth after school. Club pictures and picture retakes are on Wednesday. That also includes senior superlative pictures. Winter sports begin on the 15th and the 10 meets on the 12th.
Excellent report, as always.
Can I just add one thing here? The fall sports, I'm gonna miss listening to you sing. You made us proud, you really did. You did such a great job singing at every game. I know the games that I was at, you did, I'm sure many others.
Well, maybe she'll do some basketball.
Yeah, I'll sing a basketball. I don't think Mrs. Harvey has a choice. The oxbow could be broken.
Yeah. Did tremendous job.
Thank you. It got me into the sectional games for free also.
Between you and the photographer, that's good.
Yeah, right.
Jamie, you're on.
So, there's not a lot to present this meeting from the last meeting, but last week, Halloween spirit week, was a great success. We had a lot of participation from the costume contest on Friday. Middle school art club got to take advantage from the brand new giant touchscreen monitor in Mr. Antonucci's room. The new touchscreen was a big hit for the art club. Zadie Lauer is holding weekly lunch groups for the middle school students to provide them with opportunity to better their knowledge of their peers. During the meeting, students are encouraged to participate in community building circles and play games. The last meeting was successful and the students are looking forward to the next meeting. There's not a lot for sports. Coach Morantz and Coach Rice report that the modified cross-country team competed at county this past Wednesday at Oakfield Alabama Central School. It was very successful, great job to everyone there. Modified girls' basketball and modified wrestling has started. Seventh grade modified girls' basketball has their first game this Thursday. Modified wrestling has a scrimmage November 9th. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, and that was quite a bit of sports, thank you.
Great job.
Great, great job. Thank you, thank you both very much. Which brings us to administrative updates. And Ms. Stephanie. Aye.
Do you have, do you need a clipboard up here? I don't have a clipboard. Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, Mrs. Flores has asked that I do an update on learning as I'm transitioning back to in-person, full-time. So, I did title this unfinished learning. Lots of different terminology is out there as you read about entering this school year, learning loss, gap in learning. And I just find as I'm reading that unfinished learning, I feel is a nice representation because it has more of a positive outlook on, you know, students have not yet mastered maybe what they typically did in a typical school year, but there's room to move forward. So, I just kind of use that terminology as I move forward. Or not move forward. Potentially.
There's a trick to it.
I need it.
There you go.
There we go, this one's good. Yep. Looks like I can go backwards. So, just as I start to talk a little bit about instruction, I think it's just important to kind of understand the framework in which I'm kind of framing this evening. So, standards, our New York State standards are determined for us. They aren't local decisions. And that's really where the foundation is for learning in grade levels and in content areas. So, I like to start with that first because all our instructional and curriculum decisions are based on the New York State standards as we transition to the next gen standards. And local decisions are curriculum instruction. So, that curriculum is that specific content that's taught in specific grade levels or in different courses. And again, locally decided, again, you probably see spending some time over the summer on curriculum work, have heard Mrs. Satoru and Mr. Salatell talk about prioritizing standards and mapping, curriculum mapping. So, that's really the plan of what's happening at a grade level or in a course. And then instruction are those teacher decisions, the day-to-day decisions, the moves that they make in the classroom to carry out that curriculum. So, that's where there's a little flexibility, what's happening in one teacher's classroom might look a little different, but they have the same end goal in how they get there. And what I'm gonna focus a little bit on is some data from assessments. So, variety of different assessments, from formal assessments and informal assessments. Gonna look a little bit at some of the assessment data that we're using to make decisions moving forward. So, just wanted to talk in terms of the framework that I'm speaking to. So, in schools, we have a ton of data. I'm gonna talk a little bit about academic data this evening. And oftentimes, you see a representation of that data after it's been sorted and arranged and then presented visually. But I think it's also important to make sure that you're hearing the story behind the data, why things are the way they are. And so, that's what I'm gonna try to do this evening. So, I'm gonna start with, and it stopped me at any time because I'm going to use a lot of language from education, starting with AIMS Web. So, AIMS Web is what we were using for a number of years, K-5, for us to determine and have evidence of learning at the elementary level. It was an assessment that we administer in ELA and Math three times a year and gives us an idea of where kids are and, you know, the success and informs our instruction. So, I did a snapshot of our literacy AIMS Web in the fall in the last three years. And the reason why I show this one, this is from a first grade, is because I wanted to look at the difference between literacy in 2019, which was a typical year we started, and, you know, where our students ended up after missing from March through the end of the year. So, that's that 2020 where students in first grade were coming in. And then, all the way to the left is this year, first grade. Again, different set of students, but same grade level. And the reason why I just wanted to show that is because obviously the green is good. You know, you're looking for about 80% of students in that triangle. So, you can see at the 2021, we're at about 51%. The green means, you know, on grade level, yellow is approaching, small percent there, and then red is, you know, below grade level. So, just wanted you to see that those are data points that we look at when making instructional decisions in the classroom, tier one, and also to support students academically. We call that AIS, Academic Intervention. So, I, again, I show this because I think it's a nice illustration of where kids were, again, 2019 and 2021. So, a positive how kids are entering, looking somewhat similar.
Can I just, so the, what's the tier 1, 2, 3?
Yep, great question. Tier 1 is the instruction, when I went back to that model, curriculum and instruction, that's what all kids get, all kids. Tier 1 is every student has access to those grade level standards through the curriculum that's happening from the teacher. Tier 2, students might need a little bit more. They might be missing some skills. I'll use math for an example. You know, you can't do multiplication and division as quickly if you're not as familiar with addition and subtraction, like the connection between the two. So, you might intervene to support kids with some of those skills. They still have access to that tier 1 instruction. You're just trying to find a time, which is always interesting, to support students with the other skills that they're missing that aren't at grade level. And then, tier 3 is a more intense, maybe a smaller group, it might happen more frequently. Great question.
The, so the, I see the progression from 2019 to 2021. And obviously, we know what happened in 2020. So, is the, I think the population's 96, is that?
The, so the N is the number of students and then the percent is, or the percent is in front.
So, N is the population.
Yes.
The, and did you say this is only first grade?
This is only first grade, it's just to illustrate an example.
Yep, I like it.
Yeah, to just kind of see where our kids are at.
Yeah.
Okay? And how we make some instructional decisions, organize some data. This is one assessment. So, I don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, but informative for teachers and administrators and AIS providers. The next one is math. And I did this differently. So, this is last year, a second grade math, and now this is fall, winter, spring. So, a lot of people will ask, how did learning go last year? Was there a progression? How did students respond to instruction? Instruction looked a little differently. All things we're trying to figure out, how did students respond to remote instruction or not coming every day? I felt like this was a nice illustration about how our students in second grade, specifically in math, responded to instruction. So, again, the goal is for that green part to get larger and the red part to get smaller.
Thanks.
So, I thought I would start with some positives. I-Ready, another tool administered three times a year, ELA and Math. You might ask, why is fifth through eighth grade in 2000 and now we have 3 through 8? So, when I mentioned we used AIMS Web as a tool, 5 through 5, in 2020, we moved fifth grade to utilizing I-Ready as an assessment tool to determine, again, instructional decisions and how to intervene. The reason for that change was I-Ready aligns to our New York State standards, a little more helpful for teachers. Again, we didn't get into the big reporting, but it really aligns to the standards. So, after our 3 through 8 teachers now administer an I-Ready assessment, which we did in the fall, they can kind of see how students are progressing towards the standards that's at grade level. Additionally, the tool gives us a little bit more resources to support students that aren't at that level. So, color scheme is the same. You want 80% green. And you can kind of see, again, this is a little small at the top. Just kind of shows where we are, where we were in fall of 2020 and where we are with fall 21. Again, since we didn't administer using this tool multiple years, we only have two years' worth of data, but just wanted to show where, what we're using for middle school.
So, this tells us the assessment. And I can kind of look, you know, I know it's different grades.
Yeah, it's diagnostic. So, it's kind of like predicting.
Right. Like grade 5 or grade 6, from one to the other. So, what's the, what do you do then? Or you're probably gonna get there.
Yeah, so, like, if you're looking at, oh, in 2020, I'm looking at sixth grade, oh, we had 36% that were at grade level. Now, they go into seventh grade, wow, okay. So, there's 38% at grade level. Yeah, it's hard to, over time, I think we'll probably have a better idea. This is about where our kids are coming in, I'll say at seventh grade. And then, by the end of the year, you're looking for that growth, that triangle I showed from second, you're looking for that progression.
Yes, I like this.
Yeah.
For me, mathematics and statistics, good stuff.
Okay. So, that's, again, I-Ready data. Again, and the other piece, why the district decided to also move to I-Ready, they had a lot of correlation between how students do on state assessments. So, we got it helpful to predict a little bit of how our students would do in the spring. Okay, so, moving on to another data point that is always in the news, our New York State data. So, this is our 3 through 8. At the top is from spring of last year. And 2019, again, because we didn't have those state assessments in 2020. So, if you look at this, again, we had, first of all, let me start with, the state says, don't compare across years. They said you shouldn't take, I was all over their website, the emails that we've probably all gotten and received, don't compare your 2021 results to previous years. Obviously, learning looked different. You didn't have the same percentage of students taking the exam. If your remote kids were able to not take it, certainly we had some opt-outs. But just thought it was important, again, to look at where we were. Again, that 4 is what you're shooting for, 3 or 4, that's proficiency. So, on those slides, that's your purple and your green. And again, just a snapshot to kind of compare those two years. And then, math. So, some of the things that I've read about math is that students, over the last 18 months, had more challenges with math. And that's indicative, if we dug in a little bit more to our state assessments, where we historically have been, our students performed close to that. In math, there was a little bit more of a gap. That seems pretty consistent. So, again, I think it's important, you know, I'm not trying to paint a picture everything's great, but that's why that, yes, is there still unfinished learning in data that we need to look at? Yes, but it's a progression. You know, our state assessment results just came out, one piece of data. We administer the I-Ready and AIMS Web assessments in the late September, early October. So, using that information, being able to progress monitor. And so, lots of discussions tied collectively with staff to look at student information and to make those best decisions. I don't want to leave out that social emotional piece. And for those people that were here on opening day, I mentioned this. This is still a piece of instruction and certainly important as we know that the other piece, that other part of the story is students have experienced some traumatic events, have had loss, and that all are things that are real as we're trying to accelerate student learning and get them back where they need to be. We had, there was mention of Zadie, who is part of the Center for Dispute Settlement. She's working with us on supporting with building relationships and restorative practices. That was part of our conference day. So, that certainly is part of our focus too, is making sure that we're building relationships with students and supporting them with those skills as well, while we're trying to make sure that we accelerate their learning. So, a couple of things, some actions since looking at data where we are at this point. Certainly, we've increased our mental health support. I think you've heard that from our partnership with Rochester Regional Health, having Center for Dispute Settlement support us with an AmeriCorps member. Also have, working with the Center for Youth and have someone in the elementary building that's also supporting down there. Our focus on staff community building, like I mentioned, was part of our conference day. And certainly, we don't have student data. So, we're looking at a lot of their academic data. We're also looking at collecting student data about how they're feeling about school to also contribute to that picture so that they have some voice and we're making some decisions with that in mind as well. So, final thoughts, you know, teaching on grade levels is important. We certainly don't want to go backwards, exposing kids, going back to the question about tier 1, providing them that tier 1 instruction connected to the standards at grade level, identifying gaps, supporting them with those skills. Teaching fewer standards deeper, so you've heard probably Mrs. Satoru and Mr. Salatell talk about prioritizing standards. That work has happened even before the pandemic started and before I even, you know, came back on board three years ago. Making sure that students feel safe and seen and valued and monitoring our learning frequently. So, those are our focus areas moving forward.
Thank you.
Question?
I have mine.
Well, as you can see, really, everyone has been working extremely hard. And these are challenging times. There are a lot of aspects that you need to keep into consideration between the social emotional and the academic, the work that's been done as well as the time that students haven't been in school. And just really want to commend the administrative team and teachers and staff for all they're doing for our students. They are working hard, we are seeing progress, we have work to do, absolutely, but we're going in the right direction.
Thank you, that's, I appreciate it.
That's a bottom line.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right.
Mrs. Sadorah?
It's Stephanie's birthday today, too.
Ooh.
So, she did a great job. And I totally forgot.
We made her come in.
I know, I'm terrible.
So, I just wanted to share some fun things that seem like they're getting somewhat back to normal at the elementary. Just to give you an update, I started writing a list and I was like, wow, we've really done a lot since the start of the year. So, to kind of start here and move backwards, we had a Halloween parade on Friday at school. The kids got to alter in their costumes and parade through the building. On Friday, the 22nd, we had a trunk-or-treat sponsored by PTASA. And we had over 150 students. So, when you add all their siblings and parents, it was just a really fun, great event. So, thank you so much to the PTASA for helping to organize that. Sarah Wilcox kind of took the lead and applied for a grant through GCEF again. And we had over 400 pumpkins delivered on Wednesday. They filled their garden entrance and the kids all got to take home a pumpkin on Thursday. So, that was really great. We had field trips, kindergarten went to Sokey Farms, first grade went to Wydham Farms, and parents could meet them there, so that was really nice, especially for our parents who haven't been able to be around in a lot. The kindergarten also went to the Livingston County Government Center and did some trick-or-treating in the building to the different offices on Friday, this past Friday, in their costumes. Second grade did a field trip to Main Street when they were learning about communities. That was like a week or so ago. And they got to go up and walk all around Main Street. And again, parents were able to join them. We're having a Veterans Day ceremony on November 10th. And Dennis Staley is just such a great guy and he's helping to organize the veterans that will be coming, that will be outside again this year around the flagpole. So, we have a rain date of Friday if it should be raining. Parent-teacher conferences are going to be starting the week of November 15th. So, the teachers are really getting busy preparing. They've been extremely busy, but they're preparing their report cards and getting ready for conferences. And the nice thing is that the teachers offered, we offered out to parents that they could do them in-person or virtual. Some parents really liked the virtual, for those that might not be able to get a babysitter or both parents can't come. So, I was asking quite a few parents or teachers and they said it's about 50/50. So, we are, you know, allowing parents to come in for the in-person, but if they choose virtual, they can do that. We've had two GoBlue assemblies so far this year. And GoBlue focuses around our character traits for the building. And we have been dividing the assemblies up so that we have K-2 and then we have 3.5 so the auditorium isn't as full. And the traits that we've been focusing at so far this year are grit, understanding, and empathy. The Scholastic Book Fair is gonna be happening in November virtually. Holiday concerts are getting ready for December. And again, the music department, Chandra, already worked on staggering times for the different concerts so that we, again, won't have the auditorium to fall. We just hired, and hopefully you're gonna approve tonight, a new third-grade teacher that's going to be taking over for Ms. Brinka. And it was really great because we went back to an in-person interview. And part of our practice in the past has been to have the candidate come in and teach a lesson. So, we actually had our two finalists come in and teach a lesson to the kids. And that was great. And it's just so helpful to see the candidates interacting with our students. And Rotary came in and donated dictionaries and they came to the auditorium and the kids absolutely loved that. Ariel, our therapy dog, is back at school and she, Ariel is Mrs. Daring, our third-grade teacher's dog. And I think she's gotta be about 11 or 12, she's very great. And it was so funny because she wasn't in the building all last year and then COVID, obviously, we closed in March. So, our K-1, 2 students didn't know her. And as soon as, at the 3.5 assembly, when Nicole came down the stairs, literally, you heard a gasp, the kids were like, and then they all started clapping and it was just so great. They were so excited to have Ariel back. We do have fellows in the building now that are helping us with subbing. That's part of the teacher immersion program through SUNY Genesee. And they've been great. We still, obviously, are struggling a bit with getting substitutes. It kind of ebbs and flows, but having the fellows today. Kate Dwyer came in and I said, do you want a kindergarten classroom? And she was so excited because she'd already been in there before. So, that's really been great. And just as Stephanie said, and I think Cindy's gonna touch upon it, I really like that framework that Stephanie put up right at the first part about the standards, the curriculum, the assessment, and instruction. And I can tell you that every day in school, just today from 3 to 4, there were a group of us meeting with the fifth-grade teachers and we were talking about standards. We were talking about a new, a new part of our day that we're implementing called WIN, which is what every child needs. And it's really looking at, like Stephanie said, not focusing on the remediation and the loss that's happened, but how can we accelerate learning? And how can we take kids where they're at and continue to move them forward? So, you know, we have those discussions and the teachers have those discussions daily amongst themselves, whether they're doing it during their planning time or eating lunch. You just constantly hear those conversations because they're just so focused on their work. And I know that all of us feel this sense of urgency, but I think that we just need to take a deep breath and know that we're going to meet our students where we're at and we're gonna keep trying to accelerate that learning and move them as far as we possibly can. So, I think that's it for me. We have a lot going on, as you can tell, in elementary.
You do indeed, Stephanie. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly.
Any questions from the board?
No, great job.
Thanks, both.
We did, I forgot to add him to the agenda, but Mr. Salatell did move his update. You had an update for us today that you didn't do last. Am I correct or am I wrong?
I thought you were gonna do it next time, but that's up to you.
You can do it next time.
You sure?
I'm sure.
We're good.
That was gonna be my update, we're good.
What did you dress up there?
But it's been a great start to the school year. As many of you know, some of you obviously are in education, so you know the many challenges that were presented to families, students, teachers, schools, and Genesee. And making the adjustments and transition back to a little bit of normalcy was difficult for many students and staff because it just really is trying to get a whole nother gear and retraining the mind to go back in the body to the way it was before. Does that mean I'm done already? So, we have done a remarkable job of that. Obviously, education is in the news quite often. A lot of districts are struggling with maintaining a safe campus. We certainly had our struggles with TikTok and all the fun stuff that came with that. So, it has just been one challenge after another. And last weekend, I ran into some colleagues, my head of principals in other districts, and they've mentioned the struggles they're having. And not that, I'm happy that they're going through that. I'm just extremely pleased that we, you know, we've made a very quick transition back into the who we are here at Genesee. And it's been a few good weeks. Right now, a big focus though that we have to have is on the well-being of our young people and that involves baby. It is across the board the biggest issue in our school and it's a big issue across the nation. And it is, we are not immune to it. As a matter of fact, it's weekly, if not daily. So, I met with healthy community. So I met with healthy community careers, coalition, members of the college, and students, community members, and we're going to plan some night, first week of December, to have them come in. And hopefully, we can really generate a lot of interest from the parents, students. It really is something that everybody needs to be educated on. And I'm not alone. It was, I've learned so much in the last month and a half for all the wrong reasons, obviously being exposed to it, but it is a problem. Usually, you can target a certain group of students. It's not that. It's across the board, and it's problematic. So we will put a lot of attention and focus on that. We're meeting as a team next week with some community members and stuff, and we're going to bring it in our little group at Milosko High School as well and just keep generating ideas. We need to educate all on this topic because it's not going away anytime soon. It's dangerous. There's been a few students that have been taken medically ill to the hospital as a result of vaping. So it is not an innocent game. It is not something, although it appears because of all the flavors and stuff to be candy-like. It's far from it, and potential harms that it causes are extensive. So we'll continue to work on that. Teachers have done a great job of really giving students back to some routines, and that's, it is a challenge because really, it's not just one year of different instruction. You're really going on a year and a half. We know that the Regents exams are scheduled for this year, so this fall, just gauging where students are at, and the best assessment is ongoing, and that's every day in the classroom, just seeing where the gaps are, a skill that, and we're fortunate enough here, we have a veteran staff, and many of them have been teaching St. Regent's courses for years. And that's a big plus right now because they have a good understanding of where students traditionally have been, that have resulted in such positive outcomes for our school, and our performance levels will always be so high. So now we look at that and say, okay, typically in past years, the students had this skill, and it's breaking down skill. It's just not, not the overall big assessment. It's the daily ongoing, well, this is a skill, or students, you see, will multiply this easily, and now they're struggling. So that's where you have to back it up, and the teachers have just been phenomenal. One thing that has really been great this fall is the school spirit, and I think that was something the pandemic brought us that was really unfortunate because students missed out on that. And again, I'm going to go back to the staff. They have participated in every, every single student-sponsored event, from homecoming to Halloween to Spirit Week, and they all just really support all this new initiative. And that's powerful because we all know that the relationship and building those connections are important. And I get bad, well, I said I'd be quitting.
You're doing well.
Let me just summarize it with, I want to thank the parents. I want to thank the students, and I want to especially thank staff as well because we're in a great place right now, relatively speaking to most districts. And I almost feel bad when they start telling me the stories, oh, no, we haven't had that. Knock on wood, let's keep it that way. But thank you for all your support. So I appreciate it.
We echo your thanks to everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. And questions from the board?
Yeah, I got one question. Did you dress up as a jar of Pepto-Bismol?
I did break it out again for the big pink volleyball game.
All right.
And, you know, for the most part, it was good, and then one grandmother, grandfather said, I love it. And the grandmother goes, I don't.
Can't win them all.
Hey, I thought I'd only wear it out once. It's already been three times. I got my money's worth.
I think the majority are in the camp of like.
Some students have asked if they can wear it for the prom. I said, absolutely.
There you go.
Oh, my gosh.
Valentine's, I'm thinking.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Holt would look good in it.
Yes, he would. Yes, he would.
I think you could.
I loaned him a lens. He can take your picture now.
David, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Moving along now to the superintendent.
Thank you. So as Mr. Chenaliot said, it's November 1st. It's hard to believe that we're already welcoming November. And, you know, along the lines of just thanking and recognizing people and working together, Allison and Wendy, as the leaders of the Geneseeo Faculty Association, have started to meet with me again on a monthly basis. And I really appreciate the collaborative relationship that we are facing. I don't want to say problems, but really problem-solving and trying to work together to make our school better for the adults, the students, the parents, really everyone in our community. So really appreciative of working together with them, and I look forward to those meetings. And at our next meeting, we will have Mr. Dwyer come in, and we will have him as part of our meeting as well. So looking forward to continuing that important work together. So as Stephanie was talking about the New York State 3-8 assessment, I thought it was important to show you the difference in participation rates. So if you look and you start on the left and go to the right, that is third grade up through eighth grade, and this is again ELA, because one of the things that the state is claiming is that you really need to be very cautious in how you are interpreting these results because of participation rate. And you can see that, yes, we did have some variation in our participation rate, but not huge rates. I would say we have to be more cautious in interpreting these results based more on the fact that every school had a different learning model last year. And so to try and really compare your results, region to region or school to school, really depends on what model they had. I mean, many of us, in our own children, notice that as the children return to more in-person learning, it seems like things start to click a little bit better for them. So I wanted to just show you that participation-wise, I felt like we were in a good place. Blue is 2021, and the gray is 2019. And yes, we had a slight dip in some areas, third and fourth grade, but other than that, we were pretty consistent. But again, really being cautious with those results because of the different learning models that were in place. We saw similar results in math. So, you know, one of the things that we're always trying to be mindful of, and the accountability measures were off last year, is that we are, they say we're required to have 95% of our students participating. So we do need to continue to work on reaching for those levels. And we'll see when that accountability turns back on or how they're going to then interpret it and move forward. We'll, we'll see what the results are. But I was very happy with the number of our students that did take the 3-8 assessments last year. So you may have heard in the news that counties are investigating the test-to-stay policy. And so what this is, is that close contacts of students would not have to be excluded from school. So it's very important that you notice the terminology, not excluded from school, because they're still restricted to be quarant, to follow the quarantine procedures after school, weekends, and in community events. So what the test-to-stay program would be is that students would be allowed to test for seven days, every day, after the exposure, and as long as they continue to test negative, they would be able to continue to come to school. Again, only for the instructional academic piece. They would have to then follow quarantine procedures on nights and weekends. And much like many of the rules and practices in COVID-19 and quarantine, I'll, I'll keep my personal opinion to that whole thing to myself because I'm struggling to understand the philosophy. If they test negative, they, in my opinion, well, here I go. There it is. My opinion, they should be able to participate. So, you know, a couple pieces with this is that schools will be responsible for providing all the testing supplies. Up to this point, the counties have been able to supply all the testing supplies that we've needed, and we haven't had to spend any out-of-pocket money, bless you. So if that were to happen, there is a grant through the county that we are applying for that we, that basically I talked about at the last board meeting, that has, can only be used for a testing program in school. We would be able to use those funds to provide tests to our students if they were designated as someone who was exposed to a COVID-19 positive person. The other situation is every school in Livingston County must be able to participate. Now, the piece that I don't know because they're still in a pilot, does that mean every school must participate for the county? Or does it mean that just that the county is going to say to everyone, you have the availability to participate, and if you choose to, you know, it is up to you? So I will keep you updated. Like I said, they piloted it with two other districts right now, and, you know, we, we will continue to monitor this. I, I think it's important to keep our kids in school as much as possible. So if this, if they have good results with this, I'm very confident that we would be going down this road. Any questions about that?
So if a kid, on day one after exposure, they would come into school, test, how would that look?
Yep. So in fact, many of our students, we are testing a lot of staff, students, or parents right now, and what happens is the nurses actually go out into the parking lot and test them up there, so they're not coming in. One of the stipulations of this program is that the students cannot enter the school, which is kind of silly again because as long as they're wearing masks and we would have kept them in, you know, an isolated area, it would be fine. But, you know, we'd certainly follow all the rules that are, that would be put in place.
And obviously, they'll designate the criteria, whether it be seven, next to the days or after seven days. Because that's, that's a lot on families, seven days in a row, boom, 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 versus say after seven days.
Right. So right now, the memo says they must be tested for seven days.
Yeah.
And just want to congratulate our fall athletes. Really had on my mind boys and girls soccer and football as it was a memorable weekend, if you went to any of the sectional games. Friday night, Kim, I think, and Allison, you can attest, I don't think the weather could have been worse. I mean.
All right.
No, it could have been snowing.
I think snow would have been better. I really think snow would have been better. It was so wet. But just, we have such a great community. It was literally the worst weather in the world. Our stands for our girls were full. Our athletes were on that field, and they gave it their all. And just really wanted to commend them. Saturday was a better day. I don't know if it was actually a good day. But again, the boys played a hard, hard game. Unfortunately, they, they also lost their, their sectional game. And then the football, they played in Attica. They played against Alexander, and they also lost. But really, just wanted to commend all of our fall athletes, including volleyball, who I didn't list up there, but they really had successful seasons. And it's, you know, it's, it's different. We're wearing masks. We're practicing in masks. We have to follow different rules, and our kids were great. And so just really proud of how our athletes have performed this, this fall so far. And then we do have our cross-country sectionals. They're Saturday, and it's at Letchworth State Park, so we really want to wish them the best as they enter their sectional championship pursuit. Building project update. Just wanted to keep you updated that the capital improvement project is still in the SED approval process. The energy performance contract, you have a board resolution to approve that tonight, and then that will be submitted for SED approval as well. So upcoming events, we do have on Thursday our strategic plan kickoff meeting, November 4th. And then next Monday, we'll be meeting and do some work as a board of education at our retreat here. And then last but not least, want to wish Officer Hopper well. His last day is Friday, November 5th. He really, it's hard to believe he was only here a short period of time. He has been in classrooms reading. He's had, you know, kids in and out of his cars and just has, has really done a nice job here. We'll certainly miss him, certainly understand why he is, you know, choosing other career choices in a different organization. But just wanted to wish him well, and if you get a chance, stop in before Friday and wish him well on his, his new journey. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Which brings us to rules of, does anybody sign up to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll go right to committee reports. Item six, bottom finance.
Nothing to report tonight on finance. We, I guess I should check a little further to the next thing. I guess we had a little confusion about whether we were having a meeting or not. So we will plan to do it, I'd like to say before the next meeting, but I guess we have to balance with, align with the policy and determine if we can hope to do it that night.
Yeah, I mean, I, there is a possibility that, you know, depending on policy committee members, what time you could meet. We could potentially do a policy meeting before audit and then do audit 6:00 to 6:45. So we could do policy from 5:15 to 6:00. And then we could do 6:00 to 6:45 for audit finance.
It's okay with me. I will reach out to Julie to verify.
How's that work for you guys? That's planned on that.
Okay.
Okay. So that brings us to GCEF. I don't think there's anything new since the last meeting. And then goes to the personnel consent items.
All right. I will entertain a consent motion for items 7.02 through 7.10.
Second. Any questions on any of those items? Are you okay? All right, then, all in favor of those items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? unanimous? Thank you. New business?
In their new business, I'm trying to entertain a consent motion for items 8.02 through 8.06.
Second. And questions on any of those?
So the EPC project gets set now, and it's going to run in parallel at some point with the project.
Yes. So when they originally talked about the timing of the state submission, they talked about doing the capital improvement project first, EPC to follow, and then they will coordinate as they do the work throughout the project.
Great. Okay. All in favor of those items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? And that brings us to business office. Item nine.
The business office, I accept the consent motion for items 9.02 through 9.07.
Second. Questions on any of those?
So no questions, other than the finance committee, you had the last finance meeting review, the audit, and you have, and Cindy sent out the audit to everybody, so you have that, and then the budget calendar is, is kind of what we've gone through in the past, but just with the updated data.
Sounds good. Okay. Okay, all in favor of those items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? unanimous? Just very briefly, as far as the retreat, next week, Kathy and Mike are going to meet with Cindy sometime this week to fine tune the agenda. What works for people, for you guys, for time? I know you teach Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesday and Thursday. So just Thursday morning, first, early in the morning would work.
I can do Wednesday.
Wednesday, I think I'm okay.
Wednesday, what time?
Kathy mentioned today that, of course, she's working, but she thought she could take a lunch hour around the noon hour, if that would help you guys.
I can.
Wednesday?
I can do Wednesday noon.
I can too. I have, I have a student here I have to pick up and take to physical therapy at 2:30, so make sure I can do that. That's the only immediate thing on that on Wednesday.
But I'm assuming you would hope to do it 12 to 1?
Well, I can take lunch whenever, so whenever.
So if we did it from like 1 to 2?
Yeah.
Then I can grab.
Whatever.
Okay.
1 to 2 on Wednesday?
1 to 2 on Wednesday.
Thank you. Thank you all. Great. Okay, wonderful.
Cindy, is that what's on the agenda? Yes.
Great. Looking forward to that retreat. Okay, before we adjourn, I'd like to have a brief executive session to discuss litigation and negotiations. If someone would like to make a motion.
Entertain a motion to enter into executive session for litigation and negotiations.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, very much.